Hello and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley and today we are going to talk about how to set yourself up for your best year yet with Get Oiling. So what's happening today, we will first of course be talking about how to create your best year yet, starting today, and we will share our Black Friday exclusive deals. So happy Thanksgiving. This video is being broadcast on Thanksgiving and that is really one of the only days out of the year here in the US where we have a holiday always on a Thursday. And of course, we are typically available live. We are usually live at 2:00 PM Eastern US Time on Thursdays. And today I'm coming to you pre-recorded because I, my family and the rest of the Get Oiling family is spending time with family today. I do want to share with you how grateful we are, how thankful we are to be a part of your business, that you've trusted us with your time and with your hard-earned money to use the tools that we have and to work with us. It is a sacred thing to us to be able to work with you, to serve you, and really to help elevate the purpose that you have in your life and what you are doing, your why behind why you share your oils. So thank you for being here. And I hope if you are watching this as a recording, that you will join us on a future live call. If you would like to do so and you have not done so already, you can go to getoiling.com/weeklyworksession to sign up and be on the list to be notified of all of our upcoming topics, get access to resources when they're released, and of course, get our replays. Now, if you would like to have help on a one-on-one call, or sorry, if you'd like to have one-on-one help on a live call, one of our future calls, we do dedicate a portion of our weekly live calls to working one-on-one in greater depth than just the Q&amp;A box allows. So you can go to getoiling.com/web site review to sign up and reserve a space there. And if you'd like a hand getting things done, if you would like for someone to do some of this stuff for you, you can go to getoiling.com/concierge to meet our incredible team and request a quote for your project. Now let's talk about how to create your best year yet. So if you do what you've always done, you'll get what you've always got. Have you ever heard that before? I'm from Alabama. That's the saying I grew up with, said more or less that way, probably with a little more of a drawl that you won't probably hear from me, but if you do what you've always done, you'll get what you've always got. And what this means is, is that if we expect to see change, we need to expect to change what we're doing, right? Definition of insanity is doing the same thing and expecting a different outcome, right? So we have to make sure that we are being mindful of what we're doing if we are, of course, looking for a different result. And ultimately, what this means is that the change starts with and within you. We have to become the person that needs to fill the shoes of our business, right? We need to take ownership of the power we possess to make the right decisions, to learn from the decisions that we've made, right? And deciding to become the version of yourself who achieves the things you want is the first decision that you need to make. Are you ready to become the version of you that gets to the place that you want, that gives you your best year yet? Are you ready to make changes within yourself? See, growth isn't comfortable, and that's a reality. Change isn't usually comfortable. And this is why a lot of us wind up stuck. We do have the ability in our mind to expand where we could see ourselves in the future, but when it comes to performing the actions that get the results that we want, we often stop short because we avoid discomfort. And it's normal, and it's natural. We are evolutionarily predisposed to avoid discomfort. But this is where we have to trick ourselves. This is where we have to work on ourselves so that we can shift and do things that we haven't done so that we can get things that we have not yet achieved, right? So your best year begins with accepting the fact that growth is uncomfortable. You need to grow. And in order for you to grow, you have to change some things about you. So from there, we can get real, right? So we've already covered our, it's, this is not necessarily going to get to be easy, but it's going to be worth it. We have to take responsibility and know that we need to evolve to be able to fit into the shoes we need to wear across that stage for your next rank. Okay? So once we've got that out of the way, we can then get real with ourselves and get clear on what's next. So, write these down. Write the answers to these questions down as we go through them. Feel free to pause. This is a recording. So first, the question is, what do I want my life to look like? What does life look like? This is a money question, but it's also a how do you spend your time question, right? There will be money math involved here, just fair warning. But what do you want your life to look like? Get clear on the picture of what you want. And then, the money question, what income does my business need to generate for me to live that life that I want? This might take a little bit of time. You may need to kind of vision board yourself and then create a hypothetical budget, maybe. Whatever that looks like for you to get in the ballpark of what you know you need to create in your business, to create the life that you want in the coming year. Now, what milestones can we establish that need to be reached in order to create that income? And as a Young Living brand partner, you have a cheat code here. All you need to do is go look at the numbers. Young Living publishes their income disclosure statement and their compensation plan, so you can triangulate what rank you're aiming for and what kind of income you might be able to expect at that rank. Then you need to ask yourself, what is needed to reach my next rank or milestone? Are you looking at building a particular dollar amount or PV amount of volume? Is it in one leg? Is it in four legs? What does that look like? What is needed in order to reach my next rank or milestone? And then, this is where we need to get real. How much time am I willing to commit on a daily or weekly basis to reach that next milestone? If we know we want it and we know we gotta do something different, what are we willing to do? How much time can we give? And then finally, what measures will I put in place to make sure I stay in action, that I don't fall back into the stuckness comfort of avoiding the pain of growth? What will I do to make sure I keep moving? So now you know that the clear goal that you're aiming for is, right? So you know that you are going for this rank and you need this volume in these quantities at a date now. Now you're going to say, instead of saying, I want to hit silver, you're going to say, I need to build this leg to this volume and I'm going to do it by this date, right? We're getting clear, we're getting specific. So we want to make sure when we're doing this, setting this date, that it is one that is realistic based on the amount of time that you're able to commit. Now again, you can look at Young Living's published information to get yourself some ballpark ideas. Can you shoot for the moon? Absolutely. I am trying to promise a future here that's based on a work-life balance and not hustle culture. So you do you if you want to hustle. There are plenty of examples of people who have done extraordinary things in record time with Young Living. It's possible. But I want you to be the exemplar of wellness and an enviable lifestyle that you kind of should be if you're going to be a great brand partner. And so if that's you, you kind of got to keep yours in. So let's make this real. So what kind of time are we realistically going to make available and what am I aiming for in that time? All right. So be real with yourself. Make sure that you set the first milestone to something that is fairly easy for you to achieve. So if you are really far away from your next rank, then you might not make that rank the first goal. Maybe you make, you know, another PV volume on, you pick a number on one of your legs, or maybe it's three new customers, whatever that looks like. Give yourself an initial milestone that's easy to achieve and set a plan to celebrate it. This is a really critical step. If you set the bar too high and you struggle to reach even that first step of the journey, that lack of a win is going to feel psychologically really heavy, and it's going to be hard to keep your momentum up. It is difficult to stay in a place of growth and discomfort when you aren't seeing any of the benefits. So what I'm asking you to do here is to set a fairly low bar for the first thing and give yourself a celebration for achieving it, right? Get yourself a massage, buy yourself some flowers, treat yourself to your favorite love language gift for yourself, right? Or do something with your spouse or partner, whatever that looks like. Have a plan to celebrate achieving the first milestone. And again, you'll win if you make it a baby step. All right. So our goal is change here. Remember, not burnout. And from here, we can then plan our action. So here is the plan. Number one, you want to make sure that you either host or plan to invite your people to someone else's local event at least once per month. That means you always know that there is an upcoming in-person event within the next 30 days in your area. Okay? So always know when the next one is. If you go to one, book a meeting from a meeting. Always know when the next one is. If someone else isn't hosting one, you host one. You can co-op with people. Team Young Living is huge and there are phenomenal people who choose to work together. And PS, most of them are in the Get Oiling community, so you should definitely reach out in our Facebook group and maybe connect with others in your local area for this purpose. The reason why you want to make sure that you have something like this ready to go is that you never know who you might know nearby, who is going to have a tremendous benefit from having an in-person experience with oils in an environment that has social proof, has community. This is really critical. So always know, either it's something you're doing, or you are planning to attend someone else's and bring guests, okay? At least once a month. Now, on a weekly basis, you need to either be hosting yourself or planning to invite to someone else's virtual event. Always know a monthly live event in person. Always know of a weekly thing that's virtual. You're giving yourself options, okay? And then of course, same here, book a meeting from a meeting. Always know when the next one is. The reason why we're doing these two things is that these two are the most powerful ways to share Young Living with someone who has not experienced Young Living yet. The reason why they're the most powerful ones are because they have social proof embedded in them. These are groups. It's people that aren't just you and them, okay? So always know when a local one is. Always know when a virtual one is happening as well. And then, because sometimes you will be doing this just on your own with one person that you're sharing with at a time, get familiar with any in-person and virtual sharing tools you plan to use so that you feel really comfortable presenting. Friends and family are really great for practice, and the bonus is, a lot of them will go ahead and sign up. They'll give you grace because they know that you're practicing and you trust them, and they are being open to allow you the opportunity to practice. But what you'll often find is that they're going to fall in love with what you're sharing with them, even if you're stumbling and fumbling over your words as you practice. Another thing to plan for, expect when you are signing someone up, when you are presenting, expect that everyone will say yes to 300 PV or greater loyalty orders. This is a mindset piece. It will impact greatly the energy that you are presenting with in a positive way. Go in with the assumption that everybody buys 300 PV on a loyalty order the first time. Of course you do. It's the best deal, right? Set that expectation so that you can manifest it. And then expect, and this is where we're getting kind of real with our plan here, expect that you're going to need to share Young Living with at least five people to get one person signed up. Further from that, expect that you'll need to initiate five conversations to perform one successful share. And then you need to expect that those conversations require multiple touches before it makes sense to ask for a share. So if we were to reverse what I've just talked about here, we need to, in order to get one yes, we need to share Young Living with five people. And in order to have shared with five people, we needed to have started 25 conversations, right? Or picked up where we left off with 25 conversations, right? You see how those numbers are working? We need to have real expectations here. Could you do better? Yes. Could things be worse some days? Yes, absolutely. But if we are working from this ballpark, we can start to look at our labor in a more realistic way so that we can start performing the actions we need to, not from a place of dread or disappointment or frustration, but from just a straightforward, all right, this is what I gotta do. I've got, I've got something that I want to achieve, and that means I need to start 25 conversations today. And if that means that it's going to get you to where you want to be, would you do it? I mean, you're talking to people and sharing cool stuff with them. It's pretty simple, right? So what we want to ultimately do here is do the math and set your goals. If you want to get to the point where you are enrolling multiple people per week, you want to aim for starting a lot of conversations, right? Being in touch with, initiating contact with many people every day so that the opportunities to share are showing up in the volume that you need to be able to invite. And then from there, in the volume that you need to be able to get yeses from people who say yes to, to the presentation, right? So people who say yes to learning about Young Living, ultimately, you need to also get people to say yes to Young Living itself, right? All right. So let's talk about our action steps now for growth. Our number one goal is to hit our numbers, right? That's conversations, that is conversations initiated, it's yes to seeing Young Living. So that's going to an in-person event, going to an online event, meeting with you in person or virtually. And then ultimately, yes, to ideally a 300 or greater PV loyalty order. And this work, these numbers, hitting these numbers in accordance with the goal that you have, the next rank you want to hit, this work should account for 75% of the time that you have set to spend in your business. If you say, I am going to work 20 hours a week, then 75% of that time is going to be spent doing these things, initiating conversations, sharing Young Living, and getting people started. Okay? Everything else, everything else falls into that 25% category. And all of those things should be leveraged and streamlined as much as you possibly can so that you have enough time to devote to this growth activity. Okay? Now, obviously, elephant in the room here, with Get Oiling, you can build amazing websites. You can build funnels. You can automate to the nth degree, the kind of things that you can do on legacy platforms that cost you thousands of dollars more a month than you'll ever pay here. What about those things? All right. So let's talk really quickly about active versus passive marketing and business development strategies. You want to make sure when you're doing your work, that you know what that work is doing for you. Not all work is created equal, right? So we have active building. We could also call these income-producing activities or IPAs. IPAs are technically a bit of a spectrum, but there really are a couple of hard and fast rules for what counts. So networking to initiate those conversations, right? Finding the right people that you can get in front of to potentially share with. Ultimately, inviting people to view information to experience Young Living. Sharing Young Living, the actual act of presenting Young Living to someone. Following up with people who didn't make a decision right away. And then ultimately, signing people up. Another part of this is the hero product journey, and I get into this in other trainings, but essentially where this lies in the scope of active business building is, once you have got someone signed up and they've gotten started, you have a commitment to work with that person until they find a product that they can't live without, that they do not need help ordering next month, and that they will order with everything else that you recommend on a monthly basis, on an ongoing basis. So that is our goal, right? Active building 75% of our time, if you are looking to increase your income and hit your next rank, want to spend 75% of our time doing these activities. Now passive marketing is basically everything else. That's creating content, whether that's blog or social, it's sending out newsletters, it's sharing the promotions, it's education and engagement, and it's creating those leverage tools like your website, like your funnel, et cetera. So your goals are how you determine your percentages. So if your goal is to increase income and hit your next rank, then 75% of your time needs to be spent on those numbers, on your IPAs. 25% of your time should be spent on projects and passive marketing. If your goal is to maintain your existing business, maybe you're taking just a little bit of a step back, maybe you're working on another project that's demanding a little bit more of your time, or you're just in a season of your life or your business where you can't really focus on growth quite as much. If that's the case, you're going to spend 50% of your time on those IPAs, on your numbers. And then the other 50% you spend on projects and passive marketing. This is really important. You should never, ever stop sharing and looking for opportunities to share, no matter where you are in your business. Because the moment you stop doing that is the moment you stop leading your team. It's the moment you stop creating momentum for your business, right? If the goal is to get essential oils into every home, do you believe that you could successfully lead a team if you are no longer party to getting oils into new hands? No, obviously not. That's not effective leadership. We lead from the front. So that means that we are always going to be working on these things that grow our business, setting a great example for the people who want to follow our lead. And we don't want them to follow our lead into becoming managers prematurely, because if you get into manager mode in Young Living, you will quickly see a shrinking business, and that's not what you want, right? Now, if your goal ultimately, you've gotten to a really stable place with your income, and you've got some great builders and leaders on your team, and you are in a position to where you are ready to kind of take a step back and increase your free time, this is going to be very few of you that I'm speaking to with where this is concerned. If your business has not been consistently at, I would say platinum or diamond or higher consistently at that rank for several or many years, then this is not something that you want to consider. But even still, in this case, 30% is what we drop to. We still want to make sure that we're sharing. We're just doing less of it, right? So 30% of our time is now spent on our numbers. You want to make sure that you never stop enrolling. And then 70% of your time is spent on any projects or passive marketing. And of course, a lot of that 70% could be spent by someone that is not named you, because you can create systems so that you can hire someone to follow those projects, systems, passive marketing strategies for you, right? But that 30% of you showing up in your business to keep the enrollment engine going, that is still the most important income-producing activity. And at this point, if you are at that stage of your business, you being the leader doing those things is of critical importance. All right. So once you're clear on what actions your business needs, you can then create a list of the supporting structures that you want to create, right? There are needs, there are wants. Once you're clear on what's needed, you can then create a list of what you want. And then from there, you can plan out your projects, or better, outsource, get in touch with our team. Our team can build a lot of this stuff for you. So remember, the percentages that I have shared with you here, these examples, are assuming that Young Living is 100% of how you spend your time growing a business. If you have an adjacent business, make sure that you're clear on the differential on how much time you would spend on one business versus another, and then do your math from there, right? Before you set your numbers and percentages, be clear. If you're saying, I can work, period, on any kind of work, 20 hours a week, then you're not going to be following exactly what I showed you here. You're going to say, of that 20 hours a week, I can work 15 on Young Living, and then you're calculating from that 15 and not the 20, right? So make sure that you're being clear about that. So let's recap. First, you're going to want to get clear on what it is that you want and the income that it requires. You'll then get clear on your business milestones using the income disclosure statement and the compensation plan from Young Living. You'll get real about the time you will commit to achieving those milestones, and then you'll set yourself up to succeed and stay in action. You'll add dates to your milestones, plan celebrations so that you keep yourself energized, and set and hit those IPA numbers every week. And remember, those are conversations that lead to shares that lead to signups. And then finally, make sure you are managing your active versus passive time percentage according to the goals that you have for your business. Now, are you ready to create your best year yet? We've got what you need to get it all done. Now with Get Oiling, you'll find everything you need, all under one roof. And this Black Friday, you won't just find the best deal on business tools. You'll also find the how-to and support to put them to smart use. So stick around and learn how you can score big this season and set yourself up for your best year yet. Now, whether you're just getting started with Get Oiling, or you are a valued member of our community, and we love you, here are some of the things that we are giving away. Make sure that you stick around, especially for those of you who are with Get Oiling already, there's some stuff you're going to want to see here. So first, we're giving away our Young Living Group's Masterclass, the Brand My Business Workshop, the Email Marketing Mastery Course, the Marketing Mastery Workshop, the Personal Branding Intensive, one-on-one calls with our experts, including yours truly, your own custom website, free two-way texting, free custom domain, free month of Get Oiling, unlimited volts and classes, and bonus marketing credits for the life of your account. This is stuff we're giving away. Massive, massive value here. Now, if you're new to Get Oiling, here's what you'll get when you get started at any plan level during the Black Friday promotion. First is our Group's Masterclass. This is where you get to create leverage systems to educate and engage your customers and brand partners off of Facebook. You can easily facilitate discovery and immersion of oily information in a focused, supportive environment that you own and regulate. And you can build greater depth and value in how you serve your community. This is a complete step-by-step course. You'll also get access to the Brand My Business Workshop. You're going to take the guesswork out of creating and expressing your personal brand. You've got professional templates and workbooks and step-by-step instructions for easy implementation to create a functional website that works for your brand and business in as little as a couple of afternoons. The Email Marketing Mastery Course is critical if you want to build an email list and serve a big Young Living team. This comes with systems to support how you communicate with customers and brand partners. I share smart strategies to help you stay in their inbox instead of spam or the promotions folder, so your messages are always read. And you'll learn how to grow and nurture your email list like a pro. The Marketing Mastery Workshop, the Puis de Resistance, is such an important thing that we're giving away here. These are the four systems that run your brand partner business, and you must master these if you want to build a business that you can love growing in a life that you love living, right? If you want to have balance in how you grow, and you want to work smarter, not harder, these are the four things you need to focus on. We talk about how to run those systems so that you can grow the business that you want your way. This is a complete blueprint. If you follow these steps, you will be able to work smart, smart, and move up or down in terms of your, your systems. You'll have smart calculable systems to follow that will take you from start to royal crown diamond. You'll have smart calculable systems to follow that will take you from start to royal crown diamond. And you can grow your business like a master marketer with the time freedom that you want working not like someone who's hustling for their next sale, but like someone who is planning to attract the amazing people that you know you want in your business and to see it working. But see, that's not all. That's not everything that you'll get. When you get started at basic or higher with a monthly Get Oiling plan, you will be able to get the word out with free two-way texting for three whole months. That's saving $27. You can have three months of unlimited volts and classes. That's saving you another $51. Uh, this allows you the ability to create to your heart's content. And then you can share more promos and newsletters with 200 extra marketing credits per month for life. This powers how you communicate. And then finally, for all of this, everything that I've shared with you so far, it's just a dollar for your first month. To get all of this stuff, a dollar for your first month. Now, if you're looking for serious growth and even bigger savings, you're going to get access to the Become an Icon Personal Branding Intensive. This is an opportunity to level up your leadership and hit the ground running for the crown where you'll dig deep and discover and launch the brand and business you were meant to lead. In four in-depth modules, you will make over your mindset from the inside out and step out confidently in your business to build the business of your dreams. So when you get started at basic and higher at annual, you'll get a month, a whole month of Get Oiling for free. You'll be able to get the word out with free two-way texting for a year that saves you almost a hundred dollars. You can teach your heart out with one year, whole year of free unlimited volts and classes. That saves you $204. You can power communication with extra thousand extra marketing credits per month for life. This is huge, absolutely huge. Uh, you can brand your website with a free custom domain or email address you get to pick. You get lifetime access to that Become an Icon Personal Branding Intensive that I just shared with you. And our annual plans are backed by a 30-day money-back guarantee. Now exclusively, we are offering one-on-one tech strategy consults. This is a $500 value. You can work with us to create a digital strategy for your business on a dedicated one-on-one call. And this is available to all new annual pro and diamond members. In addition to everything else that I've told you, you'll get, this you will get as well. And then of course, you have the ability to get started now. If you head over to getoiling.com, if you're brand new with us, head over there now and get started. I'll include the link in the description as well. Now, if you are already a member, if you already use and love Get Oiling, thank you for sticking around. You're going to be glad you did. First things first, we have our three-for-three promo. This is brand new. You can win up to three one-on-one calls with our experts, up to a $600 value. And the way that you do it is to refer at least three friends using your Get Oiling referral link during the month of November, during this Black Friday promo. And if those three referred accounts are still active referrals of yours in January, you'll be able to take advantage of three 30-minute one-on-one calls with Pam or a 60-minute dedicated one-hour session with me. Three-for-three. All you have to do is invite your friends to give Get Oiling a try. And if they love it, which I believe they will, you will be able to take advantage of this massive value for dedicated one-on-one help and support for your business. And then finally, and this is so incredibly exciting, we have a brand new offer for you. It is the Level Up Bootcamp. I will be working with a small group in the new year and I am so excited about this. This is a six-week live intensive series of calls that's designed to launch your business into momentum in the new year. You'll be able to position yourself to attract opportunity, manage your time and resources for maximum leverage and take targeted action to reach your income and growth goals in the new year. This is huge and you've got to take a look at this. All right? Over the course of these six weeks, we're going to cover these important topics. First, we're going to build your blueprint. To do that, we are going to create a plan that works to level up your business on your terms. So that starts with doable daily action steps, routines and systems to keep things running and support and accountability in this small group environment to keep you going. We'll also work on leveling up your branding. Here we will learn what it means to show up on purpose and start attracting your people to you. We'll cover brand strategies for all business levels, whether you've just gotten started or you are steps away from the crown. We'll have templates and tools ready for easy implementation and we will have live reviews and strategy sessions. If you want duplication, you got to focus on your systems and we will be covering our getting started systems for new customers. What we'll be doing here is setting up systems that give all customers the best possible experience with Young Living so that they stick around, love product, use it forever and start sharing, right? And so we'll have simple duplicable actions that you can repeat with each new customer that your future brand partners can also repeat, right? Because if you can't duplicate yourself, who can duplicate you, right? And if you can duplicate yourself, you can create success and others can follow in your footsteps. And we will cover what this looks like, these systems from day one all the way through to loyal customer with a hero product they never, ever want to be without. We'll also work on elevating how you engage and educate. You'll ultimately be able to inspire your people to dive in and discover an empowered future powered by our oils. We'll be introducing newbies to the world of Young Living, getting their feet wet and teaching them to swim before throwing them in the deep end. We'll talk about building leverage instead of dependence in our customers and brand partners so that people are empowered to research and to try and to stand boldly and proudly in the knowledge that they're building. We'll inspire curiosity and help others build skills to find the answers they seek on their own so that there isn't a culture of dependence happening on your team. We'll also talk about attracting customers with content. This is how to put yourself out there in an authentic way, in ways that work to grow your business. So you'll always know what to talk about, whether you're posting on social or showing up to, uh, share with someone, whatever that looks like for you. We'll talk about smart strategies that maximize how you spend your time. And we will learn how to build influence and a following who loves to hear from you and take action. Finally, we will focus on leveling up our leadership. If you are not seeing the results that you want, this might be where things are stuck. So we'll talk about how we can step up into the shoes that we need to wear to cross the stage for our next rank. We'll talk about the posture that produces results in all areas of your business, how you keep your time and your commitments, and ultimately what it looks like to serve and empower your people. Seats for this are limited. Look for the link in your dashboard. This is only available to you as a Get Oiling customer. So go log in. If you haven't gotten started with us yet, start for a dollar, log in. Go check it out. You can learn all about it. There is a link in your dashboard right now to go take advantage of. So head over to Get Oiling to learn more and get started and I will see you next week. Have a great week and happy Thanksgiving.